Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Sorry for the mix up and getting on tonight and the late start. So we are starting a little bit later. Hopefully, we can get things accomplished that we need to get accomplished. So the first thing on call to order and then the roll call. Nicole does look like she was able to get on. So let me do the roll call. Abertine Allen?
Here.
Here.
Bonnie Shea?
Here.
Here.
Fay Moore here. Joanne Inquest? Joanne here? Christina Isbell? Nicole Coleman? Sarah Jones?
Here.
And it doesn't look like, oh, Char?
Yeah, I'm here. I'm here.
Yeah. Veronica Martin? Angie Nelson?
Here.
Doig? I'm sorry. Angie Doig, I'm sorry. Okay, so that's roll call. Does, did everybody get the minutes? Were able to get the minutes and have a chance to look at them? Okay, so could I get the approval of the minutes for October 21st, 2021 meeting?
I move that we approve the minutes of the October 21st, 2021 meeting.
I second the motion.
Question? Discussion? All in favor, say aye. Oh, have the roll call. Abertine Allen?
Aye.
Bonnie? Shea?
Aye.
Fay Moore? Aye. Charlene?
Aye.
Sarah?
I wasn't here for that meeting, so I don't know what occurred.
Okay, so you were absent, but you received a minute, minutes, but you abstained from voting since you were not present?
Correct.
Okay. All right, any discussion? Question? All in favor? We already said aye. Any nays?
Fay, can I take that aye back? I need to make a correction.
Okay, correction.
Commissioners, well, wait a minute. Commissioners, kind? No, I don't. The Minister of Defense.
No comment, then?
Okay.
And I did send the link out to, I went on and sent the actual link, Mrs. Allen, to you. And I sent it to Veronica and to Joanne, just in case. So if you want to click on the link instead of just calling in.
Let me see if I can do it. I might lose you all together if I try that, Angie.
I think you can hang up and you might be able to click, click the link and just join now.
Okay, so you sent it out to Mrs. Allen?
Yes.
Veronica. What about Christina? Do you have her email?
Um, I, I just sent it to who wasn't on, I can.
And Nicole, since she's not on.
Okay. I should have just found an email with everybody on it. Sent it out.
Well, I appreciate you knowing how to multitask like that. I don't, I still don't know how to do all of that. I can't wait till we get back to, what'd you say? In person, personally. I work better in person. Okay. So that's approval of the minutes. Treasury report, Charlene?
Okay, I'm going to share my screen with you.
Oh, wow.
Oh. The host disabled participant screen sharing, so that's.
He's a, I know.
Okay. I promise I'm not in my pajamas.
So Ms. Allen, you didn't hang up your phone yet. There you go.
Okay, so for this, since this is the last meeting probably for the year, I had mentioned on our last meeting that I would just pull together annual treasury report. It's pretty simple this year. When we started the year, we started with a balance of $20,089.75. We did a $5,000 disbursement to the Unity Foundation for the Naomi Anderson, celebrating Naomi Anderson project. So the total distributions we had for 2021 was just the one check for 5,000. We also had deposit from the proceeds of the Women's Equity Sashes that were made for the events we were planning in 2020 that all got the COVID treatment. And it was $135, I see I've got a, got a couple of date corrections I need to make. But by the time you add where we started with our deposit and our distribution, our current balance is $15,224.75.
Okay. Any questions?
So I will make the two date, the two dates under total distribution for 2020, that should be 2021. And I very misspelled total deposits for 2021. So I'll make those two corrections.
Okay. And then you'll send it out to everybody, so.
Yeah, I can send a copy of this out to everyone on our distribution list.
Thank you. Especially since right now the Secretary hasn't joined yet, so that'll give her all of the information. Okay, thank you for the Treasury report. Chair, entertainer, motion. Sarah, Sarah Jones?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. And nobody made the motion yet, I'm sorry. Motion to accept the Treasury report?
Aye.
Abertine? And second?
Second.
Bonnie? Now the vote. Sarah Jones?
Aye.
Angie Nelson? Doig? Angie Doig?
Yeah, I don't vote.
Okay, Charlene? Oh, yeah, I guess you vote on your own report, Charlene. Did I just call Abertine Allen yet?
No.
Abertine Allen?
Yes.
Fay Moore, yes. Bonnie Shea?
Yes.
Any nays? There's, so there'll be no nays, because everybody said yes. So the motion carried. Next is all business. Naomi Anderson project. Bonnie, would you like to bring us up to date on that?
I, yes. There were, there have been some delays in the actual artwork being completed, but now it is on target to be actually installed around the 15th of December. And then we'll be setting the date for the unveiling and the celebration that will go along with that. And then we are also working, starting full speed into education efforts and the archives and working with the libraries in the county and the museums in the county to help educate the public. So that's getting going now, too.
Okay. Could you also mention about how far Joseph Copes of PNW is working on the archives? So could you, have you already brought everyone up to speed on that?
Well, archives, which are being housed at PNW, they contain biography of Naomi. They contain the books with biographies about her. It includes bibliography for all of the, for about 60 of the newspaper articles, and those are also on there. Also, Joe has included histories of women's suffrage and civil rights history and starting on early Michigan City history. So that's all on the archives. And what we're doing with the libraries is we are handing them USB drives with the entire archives on that they can post. Laporte said they're going to put it directly on their website. And we're meeting with Michigan City Library next week, so.
Okay.
Hey Bonnie, can I ask a question, Fay? When you say the early Michigan City history, what are you talking about?
Well.
Where are you getting the history from?
Oh, well, it turned out that students at PNW have been doing research into early African-American history in Northwest Indiana. So we're getting some of that information and then just all the, you know, all the research we can do in the library. And that's very surprising what has, what all is available there at our public library in the genealogy section. And I recently discovered all of Naomi's church records, starting in 1857, the church that she belonged to and when she was confirmed and when she was married and things like that. So there's, but the early Michigan City history, we're trying to get together everything that we can about. There's not very much, because no one bothered to save any newspapers for the first 50 years or so of our city's history. And so the first book that was published of Michigan City history was in 1908. And so it was very limited because of that. All they could use were private letters that people had written to each other. And there's our whole history for 50 years. So it's a challenge, but there's a lot of information out there, so.
All right, thank you. Joanne Inquest has joined us in our meeting.
Yeah, it's been interesting.
Okay. Any other questions on Bonnie's report on Naomi Anderson? Okay, if there are none, we thank you for all the hard work that you're doing on the Naomi Anderson project. And I just want to mention for the other commissioners that might not have remembered why we did the $5,000 was because Bonnie is co-chairing the Naomi Anderson project as part of the Women's Commission. As at the time Nancy Mullen, now with the Human Rights Department, was looking for an African-American person to, for the Human Rights Department to honor. And Bonnie was searching at the same time, and they came up with the same woman. So we decided to do a partnership with the Human Rights Commission. So Nancy Mullen, now was working with the Human Rights Commission. I think it's an awesome event for us to work on for Michigan City. Two commissions working together is a first, that I know of. And then the fact that both of them are very excited about it. If you guys could attend one of our sessions, you would get just as excited and start telling more and more people about it, because we still need donations from others for this project, for the Naomi Anderson project. We still need donations, so please tell people about it. And that's why I had her bring up about the archives search and everything. So that would, if you could, you know, send the links to people, I think that would, once they see the information, it really puts Michigan City on the map. That's, that's what I like about it. It puts us on the map and was an African-American. Yes, Joanne?
Yeah, thank you. How much more money is needed? Did the Human Rights Commission contribute anything as well?
Oh, yes, yes. They, I didn't remember the total, but yes, they have contributed quite a bit. They did a nice sum also. Bonnie, do you have that report in front of you? I know I don't have it. Don't wait.
I don't have it, but I know that Nancy said, last month Nancy said that we were within $10,000 of our goal. And our goal was over $100,000. So we were narrowing in on it then. And I believe now that we're very close, getting very close to. And it's what we included in the grant to Indiana Humanities and the budget for that grant. Everything on that is what we're trying to cover. And we're getting very close.
Hey Bonnie, have you talked to Alan Williams about the history of Michigan City?
Alan Williams, you said?
Yes.
That's a good idea.
We've been trying to.
We did a, we, at the old Mullen School, and I gave him a ton of history. And then when I worked part-time at the, I started a pile on Michigan City. So there, there should be something there, and Alan Williams should have a ton of stuff.
Yeah, Abertine, if you can contact him and give him my number or Bonnie's number, because we have been trying to contact him, and we have not been able to contact him. Jerry Jones?
I will see what I can do, because you know he is ill now, so I'm not.
Right, right, because Jerry Jones has been the one that's been working with, trying to get ahold of Mr. Williams. And she has not been successful.
Yeah, I haven't seen him in quite a while, and I know, I know he's been very ill. So I hope he's doing well. He's, he's, he's very interested in so many things and has accumulated so much information about a number of issues. He's been incredible, you know?
Right.
Yes. I will see what I can do.
Okay, yeah, appreciate that. Thank you. Because I have been trying also, and we just had not been able to get ahold of him. So we're hoping that we do, because the Black History Committee has already started meeting and.
A lot of that information is over at the old Mullen School, too.
Where in, where, how could we get ahold of that?
I don't know who's running that, but I had given him information on my, my family's history back to 1906 or somewhere around in there. And then the first African-American lawyer and attorney here in Michigan City, all of that information I gave to him. And so I might still have some of it here at home. And that's why I was asking the question. What do you have in that information as far as Black history goes for African-Americans?
Very, very little for early Michigan City history of blacks, yeah.
Okay. I need to talk to you two, and then I'll try to get in touch with Alan. I don't know that he's receiving any calls at this time.
As far as someone just asked about Mullen, I don't know who's using it at this time. I know that, I'm trying to remember what. Yeah, I don't know who has offices there.
Abertine?
Thank you. Yes.
Contact Mullen School or whoever?
I will try. I will try.
I'll keep it there.
Yes.
Thank you. Oh, that'd be fantastic.
You better get all the history before I start losing my memory, too.
Isn't it the truth?
Them telling, I'm serious, too.
I am serious, too. Now, when people used to testify in church that they thank God for their mind and having a sound mind, I know what they talking about now. I reached that level. So, okay, we're going to move on to our planning session. So I pulled out our, and my glasses are not working well today. But anyway, I pulled out Section 2, 459, Commission for Women Ordinance. And I thought that if I read what we have, it says that establish purpose and intent. There is hereby established a commission for women. The purpose of this commission is to ensure that women and men have equal opportunity to function fully and optimally as citizens of the city, as equal participants in the economy, in politics and government, in education, in social development, in the system of justice and in all other facets of life. It shall be the aim and goal of the commission to increase awareness and understanding of the statue, of the status of women, the needs of women and their families and the issues women face. Identify available resources and services, meeting their needs and the gaps that remain in existing services. Monitor, review and provide balance analysis of federal, state and local policy for its impact on city women and to make recommendations regarding those policies to the Human Rights Department for appropriate action to ensure women's equality. And it goes on to say, we are to stimulate and encourage legislation for the development of social services of particular benefit to women, allowing them to become better educated, better connected to their communities, better aware of resources and opportunities and better engagement in resolving the challenges they face. And we're to advocate, advocate for pay equality, better health care, affordable quality childcare, better workplace environments and with no sexual harassment and other issues identified in listening sessions of the Indiana Commission for Women. So that's, that's our main purpose of the Women's Commission.
Yes.
We can move forward from there.
I think it is important to read that aloud every year. I do. Because we have new people coming on each time, you know? And it's.
Right.
For us to really understand the goals.
Right, so we're open now for our planning session and setting goals for 2022. So anybody have something standing out real quick with, on your mind?
Well, I just wanted to say something first, really, yeah. And it really follows what you've just said. Basically, what we have done over the years and what we are supposed to do is acknowledge any issues, any things that are being done correctly or things that need to be changed in any way in order to protect families. And we reward where people are doing a good job. That's basically what our, our role is. We often don't create things, we help create perhaps. But, and so keeping all that in mind, we haven't had a decent fundraiser in years. Number one, I think, on our list of things that needs to be accomplished.
And what I would like to add, though, is too, is that maybe in the planning that we, you know, identify those key dates, like we have, you know, we know we have Women's History Month, but then we have in August, is it Women's Equality?
Women's Equality Month, yeah.
You know, and maybe we, we kind of shoot for a fundraiser around that timeframe, too. But, you know, we don't have to reinvent the wheel, because there's so much stuff out there. But if we could maybe identify key, key, you know, maybe, yeah, that, you know, we could just kind of piggyback on some stuff and not, you know, start over. But I would say Women's History Month, you know, if we want to do something with COVID and the cold weather, maybe we could do some type of virtual silent auction or something of some sort that we could raise some money and maybe not have to be, you know, in close quarters with one another. But I just think Women's History Month, we got to figure out something that we can put out information, like on a weekly basis, some type of historical fact or whatever it is. But I feel like those, those are two key dates and March is the key month that we should really be doing something. You know, I just, that's just my, you know, opinion that those are months that big that are important.
So I wonder, since we provided funding for the celebrating Naomi Anderson, and I know Bonnie, you guys are working on an education component of that, is there something that we might be able to partner with you guys on in, during Women's History Month to help further the education around Naomi Anderson and potentially some other of our historical women in the area?
And that's, yeah. I'm not sure what, what we could do then, but I know that we are already thinking about, about going into classrooms, at least in, in March, especially March for Women's History Month or in February for Black History Month. But we were going to try to get into schools, time to talk about Naomi specifically. And, and we, one of the major goals of this project is to get people interested in our history, in Michigan's history. And so that would fit in, you know, I mean, that, that would certainly apply any month. So, but I think March is going to be a big month here for that, for the Naomi.
And my other thought, too, is in 2020, we had provided funding for the PNC student who was doing the research on the female race car driver. I know that there's a plaque for her now, I think around Millennium Plaza. So to me, that's something that we helped support, that along with Naomi Anderson. It could be the opportunity for us to market the support we provided for them that had bring these women to life. And, and I think, Angie, to your point, tie some type of fundraiser or something to that that said, hey, we were able to support bringing these women's lives to, bringing these women's histories to life and acknowledging that through, through help with financial support and certainly man, or women power support for the number of women on this commission who are supportive of Naomi Anderson. So I think that would, that could be really nice, promoting what we've done, how we've helped to elevate the, I'm missing the word, but the portrayal or the, I want to, yeah, there's a word for it. It's not coming to me. And then I do like the idea of the, you know, in, in years past, we've done a banquet in August that we paid for to acknowledge the anniversary. And I think maybe, as I think we were thinking about 2020, I think it's maybe time we start holding maybe a bigger event and, and having people pay for the luncheon. And maybe work in some, a good enough margin in there that we have some profits as well as maybe some corporate sponsors who I know that, who most likely are willing to support women's organizations or focus on women. So just a couple of. So just a couple of thoughts.
I like that. I think we could get sponsorship.
I do, too, Angie. I think what we need to do, too, if you want to promote history, we shouldn't just promote it in those particular months. We should do it all year round.
Well, and you started doing
Go to the school and try to ask them about, why not put something in their curriculum that supports the knowledge for youth about African-American Indians and all of that. They're not getting that in school on a daily basis. And that's where we're falling through the crack at, you know, once a year, once a month, once every, twice a month. That's not going to get it. We need to be more proactive. Right now, we're being reactive.
Yeah, I agree with that. But I think, too, that just like with other leaders, when you're on these commissions, you're usually on multiples. And I don't know that we have the capacity. I can tell you, I wouldn't have the capacity to do something every month. But I believe, I agree with you. But I just don't think, unless we get a larger group of volunteers to help us, it'll be
I don't mean that we should go to the schools to make a change in their curriculum. We're about making change. And so we should petition making a change in what the students receive. I know they're not receiving the total true history of this country. And so maybe that's one of our causes we should take up because we can't cover what they should know in two months out of the year.
True.
Well, another
So we have something to petition for. That's what you read, right, Faye? That we should be doing. So then we want to be proactive, and that's being proactive. We're going to petition the school. You know, I mean, they can only say no. Right, we could come up with some things that we still feel should be included in the curriculum. Exactly. All you have to do is include early American history, and that's Native Americans and African-Americans. The first one that came through here was DeSable. So, you know, a lot of students don't know that. Okay, Joanne had her hand up.
Yeah, I was just going to point out that there may be a number of teachers that are doing more than we realize. That often is the case. And not that they don't follow the curriculum. I mean, sometimes the curriculum can be bent a little bit and, you know, and we've seen that in the past. We've had some wonderful things that teachers have done, and we've rewarded them for it. I think we need to ask about it. Ask and find out if teachers are doing things that they want to tell us about, things that really help educate students beyond what is generally, you know, accomplished looking at the curriculum values. As I said, there are people doing a number of things that I think would really surprise all of us. And I'm thinking back when we rewarded very fine teacher when she wanted to take the entire class to see a film that was very important for all of us. And we certainly backed her up on that one. I'm sorry, I can't think of the name of the film right now. But it was about
It was, I can't either, Joanne.
It was figures.
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 Pass that.
Yes.
I want to go further than that.
It was wonderful. And, you know, I know the kids responded extremely, excitedly about the entire thing, and they still talk about it. Those probably still going on. And, you know, we just, we just need to bring them out and bring them to the public and celebrate it.
Bonnie, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I had, Faye and I had talked before the meeting started. And I said, well, one thing we have to plan for is how to promote, how to market the grant funding that we have available and who to market to. And the, last year, a woman from, a teacher in Michigan City who is, you know, she was an award-winning history teacher, had received the award for the best history teacher in the state of Indiana. And she spoke at a league meeting. And as a thank you, we bought several books. We let her get on Amazon and just choose books for her classroom that were all about suffrage history and women's rights, women's fight for the right to vote. And I think we bought like five or six books for her. So that's, and that's another thing. Maybe we could really focus a lot or at least try to promote our grant funding to history teachers or history departments or something in the city.
Oh, I totally agree, Bonnie. Teachers are always eager to get some support for something they're doing, and they're very proud of what they're doing. And some of these things are extremely original. And they need to be encouraged and helped.
I would agree with Joanne about asking first to see what is, what we are already doing in the schools. The need first, and then go from there.
Right. So Sarah, can you give us an idea of who we should talk to, probably, to find out some of this information?
I can email. I have a contact that I keep in touch with when we have things, like when we did the poetry contest. And then she sends me little tidbits here and there. I can reach out. I can't remember her name offhand. I think I get all the names mixed up. Let's pick all the different schools because my kids go to school. I'm involved with the schools and in a couple of different schools. So I can email and set a, put together an inquiry.
Okay. We appreciate that. That'll give us a start to getting into the schools. We find out who we can, you know, contact to find out more about what the teachers are doing towards Black History and towards women, women history.
I don't think
There are certain grade levels that different parts are tied to with our standards. So we have to cover the standards set by Indiana. And so like some, like, I believe it's fourth grade, it hits hard on more of America. Like, as you go to different grade levels, it might be more of world history. You know, you have your government. So there's different classes that it would maybe tie into a little better where those inquiries might come up more in the different grade levels or the different classes rather than every grade all the time.
But still, that'd give us a start of finding out about the curriculum and finding out what we can do to help, like Bonnie said, maybe buy books or assistance of the project.
It's different across the board. Like, in my grade level, we focus on community and community helpers and what it is to be a good citizen. So we personally, we had, for example, we had the fire department out today. And we made a point, you know, it could be firemen, it could be firewomen. So trying just to incorporate things just in even the youngest grade all the way through high school. So what grade level is this? I teach kindergarten.
But we have people in the central office that know a great deal about what's happening. And I'm going blank on names right now, too. It's been a while since I've
Betsy is one I think I speak with frequently.
Yeah, and Bonnie, I'll look through some names and Bonnie, excuse me. Sarah, I'll look at some names and get back with you about that.
You know, the other thing I'm thinking about, you know, as we think about women who've made a difference, you know, we're right next door or we're next door neighbor to the National Park. And I think about some of the women who have, Dorothy Buell, some of the women, now, they may not necessarily be Michigan City women, but women who helped contribute to the saving, saving the Dunes, saving natural resources for us to have parks. I think there's rich history, too. And maybe, maybe there's opportunities to look at partnership there. And as we think about Women's History Month that ties into the National Park and our natural resources and our environmental movements that we're seeing. So I think, Faye, what I'm thinking about is, you know, you talked about the collaboration in the human rights and the Women's Commission to help with Naomi Anderson. And maybe we should be thinking as part of our planning process, those other strategic alliances and partnerships that, so we don't, we're not going it alone.
That brings us to such a small group.
Yeah.
There's another hand, oh, Joanne again.
Yeah, yeah, Joanne again. I was going to say, I'm sure if we just even make a phone call to the Dunes, we will have an entire list of women that have been involved with the environmental movement, going back to the beginning of, in the early 1900s. I mean, it's, I was astounded when I moved here and found out about the strength of the women in the area as far as really keeping, keeping on the National Park area. I mean, because the park was really designated, was not designated until much later. But in the early 1900s, they were considering the park. It wasn't called Indiana Dunes at the time. It was another name. But, yeah, and it was all women.
So Joanne, would you, would you like to make that call? Your voice.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, my, to make a call to whom?
To get us a list from the Dunes of who we might, the people we can contact.
Oh, sure. That's easy to do.
I guess it'll be here before we know it.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think one of the Rangers, they put on a program called Badass Women of the Dunes, which is really, really fascinating. Called, you know, talking about Diana of the Dunes. And, you know, you think about the time that she was living on her own, you know, this, I guess, math genius, who, educated woman who just decided to live in a shack in the, in the Dunes. So, so they already have content and stuff with regards to some of the history of the women in the Dunes. So again, looking at where we can maximize content and opportunities already available.
A number of contemporary women, too. And I think of someone who really, very active. She recently died, and I'd love to honor her. You probably know who I'm talking about. Yeah, it's, as I said, it was very exciting for me to learn all that when I first moved to Indiana.
Okay, I think I saw Abertane's hand or
No, you didn't.
Oh, okay.
I'm listening.
All right, anyone else?
So Faye, if I can kind of summarize what I've heard so far, it seems like themes that are coming up are an opportunity to focus a more concerted effort for fundraising in 2022. Gosh, I had to stop and think there for a minute. So opportunities to look for funding opportunities and maybe channel those toward Women's History Month and looking at putting together maybe some dynamic program or dynamic speakers or look at where we can really leverage that month to raise funds. And also potentially looking at the anniversaries in August when we're celebrating, because August is also Women's History Month, not Women's History, but International Women's
Equality.
Women's Equality, but when is International Women's Day? Is that March or April?
April.
Okay.
Our set is the International Women's Day. And then the whole month of March is our National Women's History Month.
So and maybe, since we weren't able to do what we wanted to do to celebrate the 100th anniversary, maybe 2022 can be the 100th anniversary. We could have a really nice 100th anniversary plus two or plus one, whatever the number is.
It'd be plus two.
Yeah, 100 plus two celebration of women's equity. And maybe have a really low out in a very nice luncheon or maybe a nice dinner.
And make out a fundraiser.
Yeah.
Yes.
People definitely miss the luncheon that we had, definitely. And I really look forward to doing it again. And I think people would be delighted to pay for the luncheon.
And I think the one other thing I would add to that, Faye, to bring in what was mentioned, too, was the importance around how can we leverage these opportunities to support the education, maybe around the women that we may celebrate within the school systems. So looking at a better partnership to help support some of the teachers in teaching the history of women.
Sounds great. We don't have to vote on these, right? We can just have them in the minutes. Okay.
Yeah.
Sometimes me just being kind of a newbie at this whole thing, I really don't, I'm just kind of taking it all in because I've not experienced this yet. But it's kind of with you reading the mission and going back with the history, kind of a theme to me I'm seeing stick out is kind of getting back to who are we? And just in general, women, who are we? Who were we? Who we are now? Who our commission is, what we stand for? It's kind of what I'm hearing being talked back and forth.
Yes.
That's like saying yesterday, today, and to the north.
Can I add something? I know I have to leave here shortly. But I did speak to Todd Connor from the Emerson House about possibly, and I don't know, you know, about us having some type of retreat there at some point in time. So he was very open. He wants to, you know, provide, you know, the space for different organizations. So could be an opportunity for us to do something there as well. I mean, Faye, we were at the event here recently.
Yes, that is a beautiful venue.
Very nice. And he's been very open, and I met with him afterwards, too. So that's an opportunity for us.
Is it expensive? The Emerson House is off of Johnson Road.
No, I think he would be open to hosting something or helping us with something, or even a fundraiser of some sort. But it's, yeah, if you go, if you're going on Johnson Road and you cross over 400 North Point into, going towards La Porte, first street across from that Horizon Bank, you make a right, and it's right down there, and it's a former
Oh, I know where that's at, yeah.
Yeah, it's nice, very nice.
Yeah.
Yeah, Dr. Arrelando's office is right there on the corner. You make that right, right in front of his office. And Dr. Black, I think it used to be. I know Arrelando is there. And the next, on the other side is Dr. Mead and Dr. Motley's office. So it's between, that's right between there. Make that right and go down there and around. And it's, it's a nice venue. It's real nice. And plenty of, there's plenty of parking I think. There's an old home that's been opened up to the public to use for weekends and events.
I always think of you as so charming. Oh, that's wonderful. I love that feel. I really do. I love old homes.
Okay, thank you, Angie, for that information. And you said the name was Todd Connor?
Yes, yes, he's, he um owns, owns the um Emerson Home, House and uh, and handles all of the bookkeeping and stuff.
Okay, what else we have? So I think we did real well, we came up with quite a few um themes to start working on and, and to um get in, and, and to. And I also wanted to uh move the elections up to next month, to December, so that the, the new committee can start work in January. If that does, um, do I have to make a motion for that?
How is it?
Is it in the bylaws a certain way?
It does not.
Yeah, I thought it said that the election had to be in January.
January.
But I, but that reminded me, we need to find out if um any, any of us, um, if any of our terms are expiring next month.
Mine is, mine is, mine is a weird one, it's in the mid, it's in the middle of the year.
Really?
Yeah, it, it's the only one that's not with everyone else's.
Well, Joanne, yeah, I see yours is June fifth, twenty twenty-two.
Yes, yes, in June.
Yep, everybody else is December, you're right.
Are any of them this year, Fay?
Um, no, because Charlene renewed and um uh Abertain renewed.
Good, good.
Good, yeah, because that was never, I kept looking at our, our website and it was never clear, good.
Well, I suppose they fixed it because they did renew. So that makes, I mean, Charlene, you would, uh, it would be uh two years, right? Oh, four years, four years now, aren't they?
I think it was four, four years.
Right.
I think so too.
So you guys did it this year, no, you did it twenty twenty, wasn't it?
I don't know, the pandemic.
I, I was actually reappointed in December of twenty twenty, which was the end of my term.
That's what I thought, right.
Yeah, so I'm coming up on my first year, or my fifth year, however you want to count it. My year one times two, one point two.
Okay.
What does mine say, Fay?
It's the only one that's in the middle, who's that?
Abertain, what does mine say?
So you just renewed, didn't you renew also in twenty twenty?
Yeah, I think so.
It was twenty twenty because it expired twenty nineteen, December twenty nineteen. So yours would be the same, it would be December twenty twenty-four.
Okay.
Unless they changed it because you actually went in like in February, I think it was.
I'm not sure.
Before you got in, but anyway, it should, it should have stayed the same for the, for December, I guess. Sarah, I got Sarah ending twelve twenty-two, twenty twenty-one, is that sound correct?
So, I think so, I started, it was in the summer of COVID. So, and I think it was, I want to say it was two years, but that'd be.
Okay, I'll check with the um office to, uh, tomorrow, yeah, we got another day Friday. I'll check with them in the clerk's office tomorrow. But uh on their last report was twelve twenty-two, twenty twenty-one. Everybody else is twenty twenty-three, except for Joanne, that's twenty twenty-two.
And I don't know how that happened.
And everyone else is December. I'm wondering if you finished up someone's term.
Oh, I'm sure I did, I'm sure.
So that's probably why, so you probably came in June.
But generally speaking, when you do that, I, I thought it reverted back to that.
To, to, right, right, so.
So that, so that we do.
Clerk's office.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll, I'll take the, yeah, I was gonna say, we probably should check, it, it shouldn't be at all the year.
Right, so we'll, I'll check on that uh tomorrow.
So again, I'm sorry, this is, again, this is a little new, I'm still learning. Um, so what would I need to do if that's accurate, that would be?
I'll send your email, I'll send your email tomorrow after I get word from the clerk as to what's what. And you were a mere, mere appointment, so it would mean that you would um fill out another one of those um requests if you still wanted to be on and send it to the mayor and let him know you still want to be on the uh committee if so. And then he would make a decision whether to let you stay or if he got someone else in mind.
Okay.
And then, then the clerk's office will let you know to come in and get sworn in.
Thank you.
So I'll check on that and I'll send an email out to Sarah and uh Joanne tomorrow as to what they're.
Thank you.
Okay, so what other business we have? So I didn't have any new business, does anyone have anything that they did not get to me for new business? Okay.
Oh, I'd still, I'd like to clarify then, when we're having the election.
Oh, so it would be in January, Bonnie remembers reading that it said January.
It is.
And then when she said it, I do remember.
Yeah, it's definitely January, I thought.
Election started January.
Yeah, actually, it says election of officers.
If you wanted to change it or something.
January of each year.
To do that, we'd have to be able to, yeah, to wait anyway.
Yeah.
So it'll be January and um, okay, so do we have any new business? None, uh, public comment?
Well, we, I think we have to get something together to be able to have an election in January. You should have many, a nominating committee.
Yeah, or uh, yeah, you should have somebody that, that could. Because I, I was gonna say, if people are interested, who would they contact? Well, since I'm not a voting member, you want me to find, reach out to everybody?
You got time for all that, you have time?
All I can do is I will send out an email and say, these are the positions that are up. If you are interested, please let me know and that, then we could come up with a slate, since I can't vote.
That sounds wonderful.
I'm just gonna email out to the whole committee because we have um uh the, the chair, the vice chair, well, president, vice chair and the treasurer.
And secretary.
And secretary, support positions, and it's, we do it every single years annually. We might, you might, you all might want to think about, you, you want me to change the ordinance?
I know it should be, Bonnie, I think it should be two years, would you think, Bonnie?
You think, well, we, we've had people, we've had people stay on without any problem.
Yeah, but it, it seems like that's a, a whirlwind and then you have the elections every year in January after the fact.
The weather is bad.
And these are four, and these are four-year terms, so two years.
Well, I, I, and I don't know if you remembered, but about a month or so ago, I suggested that since we missed so much this year, people should just stay up for another year.
I, I, I think if, maybe we could ask for unanimous consent from the whole entire board um for it to, to extend it another year.
I'm in favor of that.
Do that by vote, you can do that by vote.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Can we do it now?
Who's missing?
Um, we have three, we have one, two, three missing, the secretary.
Nicole.
Nicole, Florrie, um, we have Veronica Martin and um.
Do you have in your bylaws, you can do an email vote? Do we have that?
No.
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 So uh my, my first question is, Fay, would, are you open to staying on another year?
I really would like to give it up.
Oh.
Because I have so many uh groups that I'm on, first Naomi Anderson went longer than I anticipated. But um, and, and, and so many other groups that I'm with that I would like to give up the chair. I would still like to be on as a commission, but I would like to give up the chair.
So maybe I should send an email out there.
So, so Angie, I think it would make sense, because I'm not sure how Nicole feels, because I know she has a, a baby and I'm not so sure how she feels about retaining secretary.
Yeah.
So I, I like the idea of uh you sending out an email and just asking. I also think it does make sense for, for us to go to two-year, probably two-year terms.
After you start the next one.
Right, and so if that requires a, a change, a change that you will need to make.
Change in all of us.
But I think we probably want to get everyone to weigh in on that uh to, to make sure that is uh good with every, all the commissioners.
So what I'll do then is send the note out and, and, and state that they can look at the meeting that we also discuss, you know, moving to a two-year term that will come up again. Um, but see who would like, who would be interested in each of the positions to reach out to me. And I would say, I would give them till November thirtieth. That, that's, you know, or, or whatever, you know, early in that week. Thank you.
And then um, then you would present the slate in January?
Are we, are we gonna do any type of meeting in December or we're just not gonna have a meeting in December?
Yeah, we would have a meeting in December, yes.
Well, I would present the slate, then we would vote on it in, in January.
In January.
And if, and if, let me suggest also, if it's not complete in December, and it may not, then at that time, we can ask again at that meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Perhaps in nominations.
Strongly.
Right. If I don't get any feedback, then we'll have to.
And that doesn't apply to me because I'm a mayor appointment, correct?
No, in, all appointments are eligible to be um officers.
Yeah. I mean, no, like the, the voting thing, correct?
No, it applies to you.
Yes, all members are, I'm the only one that's not a member, I'm a liaison.
And Caleb doesn't get a vote, he just has to silently check it, after we still have technology.
Check on all of us and take care of all of us at all our meetings, so. All right, well, I have to jump, but I will get that email out.
Were you an ex-counselor, did you have anything else as counselors on your next on the agenda?
Nope, I will get that email out and um put a deadline on it and see, hopefully we get people to step up.
Okay, great. So um, so next on the agenda.
Thanks, Angie. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thanks, Angie.
Gee, thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving. Happy Thanksgiving.
I'll be in warm weather, so.
Oh, where are you going?
Florida.
Safe travels.
Are you going to visit your mom?
Well, we're hoping to meet at a happy meeting, so.
Okay.
He's north and we're south, so we're gonna see.
Safe travels, girl.
Thank you.
Okay. So next we have commissioner comments, does anyone have any um thing they need to add tonight?
Oh, I'm just gonna remember to go and check and see if I can get information from uh Al Williams and then I'll check at Mullin School to see what's going on there, because they had a museum there, I thought.
Wow. Well, it's, right now, it's been used as storage.
That's what.
Some of his stuff is there, but um, well, just the building itself, um, the, one of the after-school programs, they have their office there, I can't remember, um, the lady that opened the door for me to one day, uh, we would come to look at the gym and try to use the gym.
Safe Harbor, right, isn't Safe Harbor, or was there? Yeah, it was there.
Just their, just their office, just their office.
Right, right.
And they keep the door locked most of the time and uh Mr. Allen was there, but he um, he didn't say, you know, too much about anything. But, okay, so you're gonna check on Mr. Allen Williams and what else?
Uh, I'm gonna check on Mr. Williams, I'm gonna check on uh, eh, the, the, the.
Mullin School.
Situation at Mullin School and see if the, if the stuff is in storage, can we have it? So Bonnie can look at that, you know, I mean, it's, I gave him a ton of stuff and I'm sure other people did too.
Right, okay.
I would, um, yeah, I would just, that's from my comments from the education um chair, just to recognize the um education support professionals, secretaries, um, the lunch staff, the bus drivers, um custodians, um, the paraprofessionals, um, doing all of their hard work every day so that our schools can continue running um and running smoothly and effectively. And then also our boy football, first semi-state is Friday here at Ames Field. They will have an export down Franklin and then back up Washington um at three thirty, so it will be a little hectic on that road, just for the night, so go Wolves.
Yes, go Wolves. Charlene? Do you have any comments, Commissioner?
Nothing for me.
I have this, my video part, I don't know what I did, I touched my, my calendar and everything disappeared.
Yeah, you did disappear.
Yeah, I touched my calendar and it just disappeared. I was trying to find out the third Thursday in December, the date for that, to make sure that I was available.
I believe it's the seventeenth.
I think I have the sixteenth, I have the sixteenth on the agenda.
It's the, it's the, the third Thursday in December is the, it's the sixteen.
Right. Sixteen, okay.
Sixteenth.
Sixteen, yeah.
Yeah, it's on the bottom of the agenda.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, does, does anyone have, uh, Bonnie, did you have anything? No. Joanne, uh, oop, she just walked away. I don't, I don't have anything.
Uh, I will not be at the next meeting, I will be in Spain.
Spain, oh, can I go?
Sure. Actually, the tickets were a little bit less this year.
So if you have anything, you won't be able to get on in Spain, what?
I think I'll skip that. By that time, I'll be speaking Spanish and I won't understand anything that's happening.
And you won't be able to figure out what kind it is.
Right, that's gotta be the main thing.
That's for sure.
Um, Bonnie, you have anything uh to end the meeting with?
No, I don't.
Okay, I, I don't have anything for the uh, the NAACP either. We have a meeting going on night, tonight, our general membership meeting, I don't know what it's called, I mean, uh, yeah, general membership meeting. So I will submit the uh, the payroll and, and uh, how do we do the recording, Bonnie? Nicole can still get the recording?
Get the what? Oh, the recording.
The recording.
Um, I think just talk to Caleb about it.
Okay.
He would be in charge.
Okay, then.
Yeah.
All right, all right, so if all minds are clear, we will consider ourselves adjourned and I got.
May I just ask a question, because I was bored in technical things, but tonight, could I not just click on the um, the password or what we usually do because it was a copy piece, is that, it was a, it was a?
Right, you couldn't do that because it wasn't a P, right, it was a photo of a P D.
Yeah, but I, somehow it worked out, I mean, I.
No, Caleb sent you another link probably, which you used, wasn't it?
All I know is that I.
Or Angie.
Tried, I tried to get on Zoom, I got on Zoom and worked it that way, I thought I did. Whoever helped me, I'm pleased.
If you, if you already have a link for Zoom, then all you have to do is click on the Zoom link and then um, meeting ID and password.
That's what I do.
Yeah, but the, the link itself wasn't. Yeah, but the, the link itself wasn't a live link, so that's why you can just, you can go.
I kind of figured that one out, yeah.
Well, as we announced, I think you weren't on here at the time, you can always go to the emishacity.com and go to the agendas, and the agenda's always on there, that you can click on and get on.
Oh, okay, well, so that would not have been a, a photographed agenda.
Exactly, exactly. So for future reference.
Okay, someday we'll meet together and then I won't have to worry about all of that.
Right. So, all right then, so everybody have a good evening, thank you.
Thank you, and happy, happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Yes.
Be safe and healthy.
Okay.
Be safe and eat healthy, remember that.
Always, always, always.
Okay, good night, everybody.
Good night.
See ya.